Our trustee president is going to begin the meeting.
Hi, everyone. As Jill mentioned, I'm Charlie Pensabene, the president of the East Greenbush Community Library Board of Trustees. So I'm going to call together the special board meeting, starting at 6:30 on potential land use at the library. So as Jill mentioned, we're going to start off with the public hearing portion or the public comment portion. So with that, we'll turn to Mary's Got the List, and I'll give her the microphone for... Oh, yeah. And then just to clarify for folks, we've got, I know the last meeting, we did the small handful of written comments first, and then the remainder of the folks that were in public. We're going to flip that today, just because of the number of people here. We'll do the in-person comments first, then we'll read in the written comments once that in-person portion is done, to help with the time and the flow here. So with that, I'll kick it over to Mary for the speakers.
Mary, this is first.
It's going to be Jennifer O'Brien.
Okay. Okay, so real quick, Jen, before you begin. Just for everybody who wasn't here when I gave the instructions, we have a process that we think will keep this moving smoothly, so that everybody gets heard, we hope. Three minutes per comment, you can speak once. Amanda will hold up an orange sign, colored sign, when there's 30 seconds left of your three minutes, and then the red sign when your time is up. Okay? Thank you. Jen?
Hi, my name is Jennifer O'Brien. I'm a former trustee here at the library, and I just finished a term on the East Greenbush School Board. So I have a vested interest in both these entities in this community, both the library and the school district. I believe if the police station were put on this piece of property, it would impact the school district directly. If you've ever driven or tried to drive down Luther Road in the morning, or when school's letting out, traffic is already an issue. I think that the police absolutely deserve new improved facilities. For most of the comments and most of the discussions I've had in town, that's not the concern. I think everyone is in agreement about improving facilities, improving what they can, where they can be. I think the location is solely the concern in terms of being near the library, being near the Y, being near Hawthorne Ridge. There's a lot of communities within the larger East Greenbush community that would be impacted. So I think to kind of push this through as the only possible place in town is very, very short-sighted. So I definitely do not support this particular location. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'm Laj English. I've lived in East Greenbush for three years, but I've been in this county for my entire life. I'm also opposed to this location, to echo what Jennifer said. Of course, the police deserve a modernized, updated police station. I know that the one over there is kind of a mess. To say it's dated is being overly kind to it. Certainly, they deserve a clean and healthful work environment. But, you know, when I first moved to this neighborhood, I was just in love with the fact that we got this private road here called Community Way. And, you know, you see it with the YMCA, we've got the library. Obviously, the police are necessary, they deserve our utmost respect. But when it comes to actively building community, the police have something of a deleterious effect. And that's not to knock the police, but the reality is, who's ever seen a cop car pull in behind them and got warm, fuzzy feelings? Right? Right. Who has ever said, you know what, it is a beautiful Saturday afternoon, I think that I'm going to take my children, and we're going to go hang out by the police station? I think that we could do with something like a mixed-use space. I would love to see something where we could have a teen center slash performing arts center over in Sand Lake. They've got the SLCA, I think it's called, Sand Lake Community Arts. I think there's a lot of opportunities that we could do to have something where we can actually bring more people in, including the younglings, right? The people from Columbia High School, give them somewhere to go after they leave. I've met, you know, I'm at the YMCA four or five times a week. There's a couple of kids, school gets out, they head over, catch their lift. Be great if they could walk over, catch their lift, and then head over and get involved in some theater or some sort of volunteering opportunities. And I think that would be a way better use of the land on Community Way. That being said, if we are dealing with litigation, and if we are dealing with a town that's trying to ram this thing through in a way that is short-sighted, to Jennifer's point, and I would say unfair to the community and unethical, just period, I think that we as a community need to come together and resist that. I feel like we're probably not there at this point, but I'm unable to hang out for too too long. I wanted to get my two cents, and my wife just gave birth five days ago, and so I can't really be here for super long. But obviously, it was important that I come here and express my opinions on this matter. So I'm going to stick around for a couple of more minutes. If people want to potentially get involved, if push comes to shove, if we need a community fight back, when you see me leave, if you want to come grab my phone number, that'd be great. Also, Jennifer already has my phone number, and she has my explicit permission to share my phone number with anybody in this room. Thank you so much.
Jared Schulman?
My name is Jared Schulman. I live in the farmhouse right across the street, the one you see when you walk the front door. So somewhat of a vested interest as the being questioned abutting my property. Here for that partially, not necessarily in support of the location. But I had no clue this was going on until the TU story broke two days ago. Tried to find information, ended up going online, watching the last board meeting. And one of the things that mostly compelled me to come here was what I viewed as a display of somewhat bullying and pushing of one entity or organization against another, you know, be it, you know, somewhat threats, in my perception of, you know, with the eminent domain, but also with the discussion on the fact that this board, you know, assertions that they don't know the laws, and you wouldn't be able to do anything with the property anyway, to me seemed, you know, kind of veiled threat. But as long as the town board's been working on this, it seems like it's been behind closed doors, and this situation has just become public recently. And it seems like the town should have a process and due diligence, and decisions should be made by, you know, what the people desire, also supported by data and assessments, you know, so we can make an intelligent decision. And maybe we do a bunch of assessments, and this is really the only and ideal place to put a police station. I support a new police station. But as far as I can tell, I haven't seen that, and I haven't seen that done. What I do see is, living right here, is a large, you know, migration of children from the high school to the Y, to the library, and near misses of cars going fast in traffic, almost hitting children multiple times a year. I mean, I'm out there a lot, Big Long Moe, and I watch it consistently, and I see it, and it's concerning. And I said the same thing when they were trying to do the development of the apartment complex. That's a legitimate concern, and people don't ever pay attention to that till, God forbid, it might happen once, and all of a sudden, it's how could we have let this happen? Well, this is the opportunity to prevent that. You know, the police station's already on 920, an area that, in my opinion, is in dire need of some revitalization and whatnot. And what better way than the town to start by building a brand-new police station, and maybe inspiring more building along that corridor? You know, I don't think this board should rush into making any decision. There was that threat of eminent domain, but at the end of the day, that would lead to court cases and get in some protracted debate in the courts for years, and ultimately wouldn't satisfy what the town needs, which is a near-term solution. And I don't think that leads to a near-term solution. So it doesn't honestly get people what they need.
Steve?
Steve Montanis?
Okay, good crowd. A lot more people than were at last night's town board meeting, which I attended, which was prefaced by the supervisor making some statements about this particular topic. Gentlemen, two people before me was commenting about the town wants to do this. I don't think the town wants to do this. I think Supervisor Conway wants to do this. And that was pretty clear last night in making my presentation, and I had a fairly lengthy interaction with the supervisor on this. And not sure what his motivation is, but he's the guy. It's certainly a terrible location, and there's numerous things that you can bring up on that. Former owner of the Luther Road self-storage, I patterned the colors of that place after your library. It was built just about a year or two after you constructed this. Very glad to see that this property was preserved and turned into a massive housing project like it was originally planned. And you've done a wonderful job taking care of it. The issue is not that we need a police station, there's numerous places to do it. You could just take 10 seconds, and you can figure out there's a lot more places. By his own admission, this search has only been going on for four months, when we knew that police station was needed for 15 years. So to pull this is pretty aggressive. You've got Temple Lane, you've got Columbia Turnpike, he had three or four other locations that he didn't explore, thinking that this board, apparently, was in favor of donating the land. You shouldn't be bullied into donating land, so that they receive Community Way as a town road. That's just terrible. They should receive that road anyway. One of the remedies that could, there's a number of remedies that can be taken. If the supervisor gets approval from the town board, which I don't think he would, I would suggest a petition for a permissive referendum that would allow the town to become involved in deciding whether an eminent domain process was initiated. So there are things that can be done if push comes to shove. I don't believe it fits with the strategic plan for the library, which I briefly read on my way in here today. I just found out about this meeting an hour ago. And I don't think it's a responsible plan for the future. The traffic on that road is horrendous. Comment was made that when there's traffic on that road, we'll go out Michael's Road. Go out Michael's Road, really, in the winter, trying to get to a call? 30% to 50% of the police calls take place at Target and Walmart. Okay? So that's kind of a roundabout way to get there. And there hasn't even been a site plan or any proposed vision of what this is going to look like. He was saying something about, you know, entry onto Luther Road, another road, heading out onto Michael's Road. I think we need to stand firm and prevent this from happening. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Van Orden. I'm from East Greenbush, and I'm here, I want to, I agree with a lot of what's been said, and a lot was a lot of what I was planning to say. But I went back, I watched some trustee meetings, I watched the town board meeting from last night. And my concern for everything has been this lack of transparency. Our tax money, as we discussed in the budget, funds this library, just as our tax money pays the police. So I do feel like we need to find a way to allow the voters to have some input in this, in any use of this land, not just in the police using this land. But if there is another idea brought forward, I think that this is something that community input needs to be sought on, sought out, and not in this way, not when we all saw an article in the Times Union that was the first sign that something was happening. And I feel like that needed to come from both parties involved in this. But also, you know, I heard, you know, we could do it for a teen center and all these other ideas, but we've, I've heard that idea for years, at least a decade, and nothing's happened. So if this happens or not, I would, if that is the reason why it doesn't, then I want to see that happen. Not just have it be an idea thrown out, but see it be an idea that starts to come to fruition. If we're going to use it as a reason, then it needs to be real. It needs to not just be a reason that in five years, we're having the same conversation, we talk about a teen center again, and there's still no teen center. I'm not going to say I'm 100% opposed, like someone else said, if they come forward with a feasibility study and a traffic study and everything, and this is truly the only place in town that will work, okay. But I don't want to just hear ideas, we looked at places. I want to see the studies, I want to see the traffic patterns. There was a claim at the last meeting that the police would be able to get out faster from here. I also have a hard time believing it, I drive in that high school traffic every morning, but that is something we could prove. We could try that. So I would just like to actually see statistics, see numbers, see a study, see other places considered. But I would also like to say, I'd like to see that for any potential use of this land, not just the police station. This is taxpayer-funded, so I feel like there is an obligation to us.
Jennifer Nassevera?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Nassevera. I've been an East Greenbush resident for about 20 years, and a very grateful patron of the library for longer than that. And I'm a little bit late to the game, I will admit. I didn't really know about all of this until the Times Union article, and some Facebook posts with a lot of commentary from the public. And I think it's pretty well established that the community agrees that the police department sorely needs a new facility. But I also think that there's a lack of green space in the community. And I think teen centers, all different kinds of things, I think those are wonderful ideas, but I don't see anything wrong with preserving the beautiful green space that is here. And I'm a little nervous because I didn't prepare anything, so sorry. But another thing that is bothersome to me is, in reviewing the little bit of the last board meeting, I think it was October 6, I noticed that there was a very good question about the feasibility studies. And there were four sites that were looked at and deemed inappropriate or unsuitable. But there was no answer to the question, what were those four sites, and why were they unsuitable? I think there's a lack of transparency, as mentioned earlier. And I think as community members, we really need to make sure that there is that transparency. Thanks.
Anne? Anne, you'll have to help me with your last name.
I agree with the last few speakers that there's no transparency. I live in Castleton. I've lived there since 1999. I use this library. My grandson comes to this library for storytime and everything. But one of my main concerns is that there's something going on as to why the police want to come here. Someone's getting something. And I don't know what it is, but I know that I was with Amazon, most of you know the big Amazon, and I went to those town meetings, and I argued, and the people that lived close by argued, and it was a done deal before it ever came out. It was done. The politicians had been paid off, or whoever, and let me tell you, they probably didn't make much. And I remember our construction guy saying something like, well, we're going to get jobs. And I go, those are going to be short-term jobs. Once it's built, it's going to be gone. And then Amazon went and gave the construction to out-of-the-area companies, and that guy didn't get anything. I just wanted to laugh at him. So wake up, they're doing something behind your back, and no matter what is going on, the lawyers, the people put money into fighting it, lost. So I don't know how you do this, but you need to do something, and it's not all talk. You need to do some action, and you need to do it fast, or they'll be sitting on your doorstep.
Blake Fox?
Yeah, that was me. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to bring a little bit of a lighter tone to this one. I grew up here. I came here in 2012, is it? A little better? Sorry. I came here in 2012. I was adopted. I was raised on Elliott Road, originally from Virginia. And I do not live here anymore. However, I did graduate from Columbia High School in 2022, and on the same topic, kids, I've actually walked by your house, biked by your house 1,000 times. A lot of these kids are walking from the path between Columbia High School and the road, they come here. I personally played football in that field. I played tag in that field 1,000 times. I came here, I can't even count how many times over the years. I still have a library card. I still come here, and on the same point as everybody else, there are other places. I do not mind the police having their own new station. I am very, very aware that they are in a basement in the town hall. I'm very aware that they store their equipment outside of that station. They do not have room for everything that they have. Some of it is down here at the rescue station on the corners. Absolutely in support of them having their own building, their own new space to do what they need to do. Here in the library, it seems like not the right fitting, not the right environment on the traffic. It's too much traffic already. Having a police station is only going to, it's only going to jam things up more. There's a lot of people coming in and out for permitting and other things between the town halls. Sometimes you have to go to the police for stuff like that. And how are they going to get out, as she previously stated, in high school traffic? I was a part of that traffic, and I promise you, it is the worst. I don't know if anybody's come up here in the evening, or sorry, you know, 2 o'clock, 6:00 in the morning, it is backed up all the way to Route 4. Everybody really covered everything now, so I should have signed up a little sooner.
Elijah Jenkins?
I am Elijah. I've lived here my whole life. My mom lived here her whole life, my grandma lived here her whole life, my great-grandma lived down on Sherwood. I don't understand why the town supervisor thinks he can talk like that. I, that is your property, you know, our property, however you want to say it, but it's the library's property. If you guys, we don't want to part with it, we shouldn't have to part with it. As everybody said, we're taxpayers, our money, our decision. And like she said, they're definitely doing something behind our back. What? I don't know. But I definitely think the supervisor wants to use it to bolster his political character, his image or something. Oh, I got East Greenbush new police department, I did this, I did that. It's shady, it doesn't seem right, and ultimately, we should have the decision. It's our town, it's our money, and we have to live here, you know? I know a lot of the police officers don't live here in this town, so they're not going to have to deal with it. It's just not right. And I didn't, like everybody said, I don't think you guys should be bullied, we should be bullied into a police department being put right there. As I said, I went to school there, too. I grew up coming here. Putting a police department there, it's not cohesive with children. You shouldn't be, children shouldn't be exposed to god knows what's going to go on at the police station. Yeah, I don't know. I could just keep going. It pisses me off, if I'm going to be honest. It really does, kind of get in like, you know, because it's angering. I saw his comments, I, you know, I read the article, and it's like, dude, who are you? You know, you can't just bully people into, you know, giving you something that you want just because you want it. Why? Why? It's our property at the end of the day, your property, however you, like I said, however you want to say it, we get to decide what happens to it, not some politician in a suit that got, you know, that thinks he's somebody. It's our decision. But, yeah.
Thank you. Elana Peralta?
Hi, my name is Elana. I've been living in East Greenbush for five years now. I came here really also as a mom, and, you know, my, I bring my kids to library, probably like three times a week, every week. And I'm looking forward for them to keep using all these amenities of the community, the YMCA, which we are a part of as well, Columbia High School when they get there. And I oppose to the location as well, because it's not appropriate to all the amenities that we have in this area that are more children-driven and youth-driven. I feel like, like some people have said, there is a lack of transparency. I haven't seen the feasibility studies that have been done. I'm pretty sure that there's some other land that, like, underdeveloped land, or some brownfield land in the town that can be used as a rehabilitation project to make the town better, you know? Columbia Turnpike, there is a lot of space there that can be, can use some uplift, you know? So I think it's very inappropriate, it's not going to be safe. I would not encourage my kids to come here then, if I have a police station there, and I'm sure that a lot of parents will agree with that. So I really hope that even if you get a lot of push to pass this through, to donate your land, that we can do something about it, you know, as dads figures, that we can vote, like some people have said. Yeah, that's all I got to say. And I'm so grateful that, you know, as part of this community, and so many people show up to this meeting. So I think that's huge already.
I'm again, there actually, most 99% of the time, I, you know, encourage it, so I won't repeat.
I won't repeat what I said. This, I live here, but I've always lived here, since '74. This is the center of our town, the cultural center of our town. Our high school is over there. Our beautiful library is here. We have a Y, and then we have a tribute to this community for senior people, for people needing assistance, and people with dreadful memory care. It says something about our town. And I agree with everything. I want to just bring up one thing. I've spent my life in negotiations. I worked in the East Greenbush Central School District. The police here have been nothing but helpful to me. So please do not let this turn into a critique of our police. That is a red herring. We know that. But in all my negotiations, when I was successful, it was because I was treated with the people across the table with good faith. And they treated us with good faith. And we resolved things. There is no good faith here. This is worse than bullying, this is coercion. And coercion is the far, as far away as you can get from negotiations, from good faith. And that's what shocks me, that our superintendent, whom I've known for years and supported, would do this to this beautiful center of town. He claims to be a cultural anthropologist. Well, I can't figure that one out at all, so I'm going to talk. But this is, to me, a personal betrayal. And I just love this campus. Once I thought we should plant trees out there, like somebody said, you know? But my wife worked for the Department of Transportation, but she was an anthropologist, or two, right? And she said, but Kevin, what about the deadly fixed objects? That's the DFOs, the safety engineers say, if cars come off the road and hit those trees that you want to put there. So then I thought, and somebody on that board was quoted in the paper saying, we could have a little community center there. Is that true? Somebody was quoted. And why not? A lovely community center, which augments what we are and supplements the beautiful community services we provide here in addition to library services. Thank you all for all your support of our library, and our community, and our campus.
I'm not going to stand up. I am Eve Halloran. I live at Eddie Hawthorne Ridge, lived here for four years. This area seems to be the wrong place for a police station. The school, the traffic patterns, the kind of life that's going on here, it's problematic to me to think that a police station with all the activity would be wanted to place on this teen's land outside. As a group here, would we petition the town? I mean, how, there has to be some action with the voices that have come here. I just want to say, I think it's just in that place. I mean, the police station probably does need attention, but not here. Thank you.
Tom Grant?
Tom Grant.
I don't, I don't think I need a microphone.
It's for the camera though.
Oh. Oh, yeah. It's all about the camera, thank you.
Not for you, Tom.
Uh, I'm Tom Grant. I've lived in East Greenbush for thirty-eight years. Uh, I've served as a liaison to the uh, library board for the last ten years. There's no question that the police department needs a new station. Anybody that's been there knows it. It's a, it's a pit. It's a disgrace to have to go in there and do business down there. And all of us, I think, most of us in this community, if not all of us, back to blue. We know the difficult job our police force has. We respect them. They try and do the right thing on a daily basis. And again, they need a new police station for this. However, we've had here a lack of transparency and a lack of respect. And the question is, why? Why don't we know what's going on? Why hasn't the board, the board here been treated with the respect they deserve? The town, as far as I know, has still not submitted a concrete proposal to the library. That's a lack of respect. Who negotiates without submitting a proposal that people can relax, uh, react to? Unheard of. Maybe in some third world countries this happens or some communist countries, maybe that's common practice. But it isn't in this country and it's not in this, the, the standard for East Greenbush. You ask what you can do concretely to do this, to make an impact? Contact your town board members in East Greenbush. There's only five of them. Give them a call, shoot them an email, write them a text, write them a letter and ask them where they are on this, how they plan to vote. Are they gonna vote yes? Are they gonna vote no? I know it's gonna take some time from our schedules to do it, but it's worth it. Let's get some concrete answers here and we deserve it. We're residents of East Greenbush. We vote here, we pay taxes here. It's incomprehensible to me again that this has been done in secret. And this has been done without any kind of respect for negotiation, the negotiation process. And again, I can't believe there's no other site in East Greenbush. You go up and down Columbia Turnpike, there's now vacant land there that wasn't vacant before. I can't believe that there are no other sites that are suitable for this. If that's the case, fine. The town can then come back to the library and say, here's where we are, here's our concrete proposal. And the library board can make that decision. But you know what you don't do? You don't go to a library board of trustees meeting and you start off by threatening eminent domain and taking property from people. And essentially taking property from taxpayers because we pay taxes to the library as well. Sorry to rant a little bit. Have a great day.
Michael Poust.
I don't know how I'm gonna follow that one. For those who don't know me, I was on the library board for thirty years, thirty-two years. And I was here when this building was built, planned and built, and I was part of it. One thing that really bothers me is that when we found this land, we went through an organized process. Planning with a consultant to figure out what we needed, put that together, then started looking at sites. It took us two years to find a site. We got the site and then partnered with the Y and then we had land left over, so we needed a third partner. I put together with the Y that that, I was in the library and I was a president of the library down in the town hall. And at that point I saw that that town hall ultimately needed to be replaced, not just the police station. So I worked with the Y and got them to agree that we donate a third site to the town for potential future use. Free, we donated to the town. All they had to do was become the third partner and pay the third of putting in the road and the public utilities. And when someone mentioned at the last meeting that, that was studied before. That is the extent of the study. The town rejected that. Now this site that we're on, when we did our planning, we had information on how large a site we needed, what we needed. We took for the library, went out of the forty acre site. We took twice what we needed. Because I didn't want anybody else to go, have to go through the process to find a new site for the library. Clifton Park was in the midst of having to do that. And so that's why this site is the size it is. And it was made to be a nice green space and intended to stay that way for ten, twenty, thirty years until the trustees of this library found the need to expand it. And the intent was that this library could be expanded to twice its size with the necessary parking and everything else that needed to be done. And that's what it was reserved for. And it could remain just green space. And I think that really adds to this setting. And to put a police station there, just envision they threw out ten to twelve thousand square feet, two and a half acres. That's over twenty-five percent of the library site and a building that's half the size of this. And visualize that down there. That is not appropriate. It is not right. And all the parking goes with it.
Michael Zaragam.
Alright, so I'll start by apologizing. I'm playing catch-up. My wife called me like an hour ago from DC to tell me I had to go to the library for this meeting. My, my wife is a master chief in the US Coast Guard. She's on, on duty. She's gone and I had to find childcare, so I was late. But I'm, I'm catching up. So for context, um, I'm a systems engineer. I grew up in Troy. I did in fact come to this library when I was younger. I moved away, lived lots of other places and I moved back because I now have a five-year-old and among other things, I wanted her to come to this library as well as the Y and the school district and whatnot. And the reason I wanted to jump in here, um, despite the relative catching up is that I have quite a bit of experience navigating complex sort of procedural and political processes because most of what I study is institutions and governance. Just really scary and gross most of the time. But I say that because we keep having these calls for transparency and I agree with that wholeheartedly. We keep having the desire to kind of deep, um, kind of make non-combative the discourse with, with the police and their obvious, very real need for facility. But I think the comments about the kind of backroom dealing and the sort of closing the deal and sorting things out before they ever get to kind of public due process is probably the right site of interrogation that unfortunately, the um, kind of machinery of governance is often and sometimes un- unreasonably easily, easily uh, circumvented towards predetermined ends. And so I think what I really wanted to share was two heuristics. One is kind of actually doing some trace back and figuring out what interests are in place and sort of understanding and de-risking or ideally like finding ways through addressing that root cause. And the other is um, just being aware that even when you introduce transparency and process measures, it's actually not that hard to game the metrics in a trade study and actually what matters is the metrics that you're evaluating in a trade study. It's just not that difficult if you get to cherry pick or gerrymander what's being evaluated against to come back and say, well, we did the study and it quote unquote legitimately produces this decision. Well, actually, if you look at the way the metrics were constructed and the way that they were evaluated, again, just not that hard to get a predetermined conclusion. So um, I will cede the rest of the time, but I think I, I just wanted to point out that I think the incentive analysis and understanding the players and the factors and digging at that root cause might be more productive and towards a collective action in defense of the library than um, sort of you know, just calling for transparency, even if that is a totally reasonable and legitimate thing to do.
Gabriella. Sebastian.
Hi, everyone. I'm just gonna be brief about it because I'm, it's kind of piggybacking off of what a bunch of people have already said. And excuse me, I'm a little bit nervous, but um, I am a parent. Um, I, my kids come to the East Greenbush Library weekly. And I feel like, like many have said, we all have a stake in um, this particular land and the um, placing of the library. I just want to call that uh, that the library, the activities that daily events, programs that happen with the library, aren't just within the walls of this library, but also that are outside. Over the summer, I brought my kids to the reading um, that goes along the sidewalks. And I think that the library's usage of the inside and ex- outside exterior are both a connection to like continued learning and nature. The importance of the library having this land, um, is far more important, I believe. And I think some people might also find interest in that, um, you know, it, the placement isn't, isn't the best. There is time to possibly go back and, and relook at other places. And, and keep the safe space that is the library. Within the, the mission and the value of this library, it is a welcoming space. And I think that certain presences um, that may make discomfort for some different um, people who will come because the library is open to everybody may deter people from coming, um, myself included. So that's all I had to say.
Mickey Jenkins.
Hello, I'm Mickey Jenkins. This is my husband Frank Jenkins. We live over here on the other side of the circle. My concern, not only do you have the library, you have the Y, you have Hawthorne Ridge, you have Columbia, you have the fire department. They're coming and going, they're so busy every day. He drives the truck. Some days getting that truck off, the traffic is terrible. But then throw in Regeneron. We're on the other side over there and it's like, I'm glad they're here, whatever. There's so much traffic coming out of there. It's a nightmare trying to get even off of Cow's Corners because there's, it's just crazy. So it's like, I do agree with everybody here. They do need a police station. They need a new police station. They need something. I just don't agree with here. My thought is look at the end of Temple Lane because there's a whole bunch of property up there for sale. There's nothing on it. They could take the money that they were, they want to use and build something there or I agree with everybody, hit nine and twenty. There's so much vacant property there. We need it. We need something to stimulate the growth over there. Or business, but I won't get into that. But anyway, I just think there's gotta be some kind of property on nine and twenty to, to, to keep them over there somewhere. And form a committee, start having people go out there, figure out where things are. That's how we do it through the fire department. You know, they form a committee, try to figure everything out and then bring it to the town. That's all I have.
Albert.
Hi, I'm Albert Yasis. Uh, if anywhere on of you were here twelve years ago. There was a man at the time named Keith Langley, who was the town supervisor. And he was trying to get a casino built uh, on Thompson Hill Road right near Route four. And uh, Jack, the current supervisor, came to every single town board meeting and told uh, Keith to go to hell. And he did such a good job of it that he actually ran against him and won and became his successor. And uh, the opposition to it was well organized and organic. And there's this phrase, you either leave as a hero or you stay long enough to become the villain. And I think that this is kind of becoming this, his, his version of that. I spoke to two of the town board candidates on Saturday. They were both of the opinion that the town board did not need to vote on the eminent domain lawsuit. They were, they believed that Jack could order it to be filed ju- directly on his own say-so. And if that's the case, the town board would need uh, to act to block it. Rather than just passively voting no, they would have to actually come ahead uh, and vote to block it. So that's something uh, to note. And you're a candidate for the board, aren't you?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Um, so that's just something for you to be aware of as well, because yeah, yeah. So whoever is running for the, the town board uh, is, you know, to discuss that was something, that was the opinion. I'm not sure if it's tru- the truth, but that they needed to uh, would be proactive, not just that Jack would call a vote and they would vote no, but he would act on his own unilaterally to begin that action. And I will just uh, note that on November seventh is the uh, library board of trustees vote. I am one of the declared candidates to be on the board. And I believe Jordan White is the other one. I don't know if she's here tonight. But I, I would be, you know, interested to talk with this after the meeting to anyone who's interested. So thank you very much.
Shay Harrison.
Uh, I'll try to be quick so I don't get Amanda's warning. Uh, I was on the library board for five years. There's more people in this room uh, for this meeting than in the entire five years. So I'm glad everybody's here. Uh, I had a couple of things. One, eminent domain, uh, getting some legal folks to take a look. Eminent domain by a municipal organization on another municipal organization has a higher level of, higher threshold to be able to get through uh, a, a successful eminent domain. So I have no idea if Jack knows that, right? But um, the only way, well, the way that that can happen is if there is no other alternative for a municipal organization to take another municipal organization's uh, land by uh, eminent domain. So it's not like that house is decrepit, we're just gonna grab it. Uh, so there's a different threshold. I think it's good to find out if Jack and the town board understand that. Uh, second point, um, you know, somebody's talked about taxes before. The library, having looked at the budget for years, we don't have a legal uh, line item, right? Uh, but if that were to get to eminent domain, we're gonna have to fund in the budget of, you know, uh, taxes to pay for legal representation. I don't know what the town, towns, you know, legal representation number, but my guess is it's gonna have to go up because there's going to be a long drawn out court case, probably beyond December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven, which is a key date uh, in terms of somebody's tenure. You, you talked about the anti-casino uh, group. Um, I was on the school board at that time, the school board president. Jack also decided to start coming to uh, the school board meetings at that time and was behooving the school board to come out and vote no against the, the casino. Problem is the school, school district and the school board had absolutely no say in that decision. Yet, for three months, we were told you've got to come out and vote no. Well, during that time, amazingly, a article appeared in the Times Union talking about how the school district uh, wasn't taking a stand against uh, the school, the, against the casino. So I'm assuming a good chunk of you were here because of that Times Union article that mysteriously entered uh, online, right? To talk about eminent domain usage. Um, so I think it's great that you are here. Uh, last point, do I got time, Amanda? Talking about a teen center. When I was on this, on the library board, Jill and I talked about a teen center in this spot. The problem, not problem, I went and talked to folks, this was about maybe six, nine months before COVID hit. So once COVID hit, that all dropped off. But talking to, you know, what you need for, you know, a teen center is you need private donations, right? Which is, I think Jill's experience in her previous job where a family donated a significant chunk of money to get that started. But you need, you know, you just need private donations, you need um, municipal, county, state, federal, right? So while you're not gonna see, if that were to become the effort, you're not gonna see it in two years because it'll take a lot.
That, that's all I have on the list. Was there anyone that I missed that would like to? Yes, you can. I'll add your name, Betty, because I know you.
I wasn't going to speak tonight because I spoke at the last meeting and I was the only one that spoke. So it was a little embarrassing. I'm so thankful that so many people are here and you're wondering why you didn't know sooner. And if I'm wrong, Jill, correct me, the board didn't hear until July. Is that correct? So the library board didn't hear until July. And there's no library board meeting in August. So I was surprised the way that the town supervisor confronted and spoke to the board. And you can go online and actually see that. So I'm so grateful that all of you are here and we all support the police. And if you've ever been to the police station, you know, they need something better. But shame on Jack and shame on previous supervisors because that's been a problem for over twenty years. And they had the opportunity when there were so much land along Columbia Turnpike, when the weather vane was ready to fall apart and nobody wanted to build anything there. I mean, look at all the businesses that have built there in the last twenty I mean, look at all the businesses that have built there in the last 20 years. So shame on them. So they dropped this onto the board, and personally, I thought it was a done deal. Because if we did go ahead and give them, sell them the land, then they wouldn't take care of Community Way. If we sold them the land, they'd take over Community Way. They went to eminent domain, they wouldn't. So I personally thought that we didn't have a choice. So I'm really encouraged that all of you are here today. I was a trustee for 12 years, and I'm so proud of the work that the library does, but also all of the trustees over the years, because it's a job. And thank you, Michael, for all the years that you've put in, 30 years. We wouldn't have this library today if it wasn't for him and all of the trustees that pulled together. And the town voted. The first vote, they decided they didn't like the choice. That was at the Ames Plaza.
It was temporary, five-year lease.
And the town said no.
And a half years of the lease would, would pay the improvements they had to do to the space just to get the library in. But it was always considered temporary, because we were then planning on what to do after that.
The town people decided that they wanted this library. And what did the town supervisor call it? The Taj Mahal?
One thing I really wanted to correct, and I, I had notes here for three minutes that I tried to go with.
My bread?
You have 30 seconds.
You can take my 30 seconds. Okay. But thank you so much for being here. I'm hopeful now with all of this support.
Did we miss anyone? Is there anybody feel they want to contribute? If not, I'll turn it back over to our president.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. I want to, uh, echo what Shay mentioned about the, the turnout. It's really appreciative. Uh, we're grateful to have the opportunity for the community to come in and, and talk. For next steps for tonight, uh, the board's gonna go into executive session. We have a discussion about, um, we have a discussion, and then we'll come out. If there's any motions that are arise in the course of executive session, we'll come back in to vote on those. Otherwise, if there's none, we'll come back in and we'll do the similar motion, as in the, um, for the folks who are here at the, uh, budget hearing portion of the night to just, uh, adjourn the meeting. Um, but again, appreciate everyone's opportunity, everyone coming in and sharing your perspectives. It really, you know, it helps put the community in, uh, East Green Bush Community Library, where we have input from folks, um, and the diverse array of perspectives from, you know, folks who use the library every day to folks who, you know, are in the community periodically. We really, we appreciate it and helps inform our, our decision-making. Oh, and the, thank you, Jill. Yep, the, and then we've got, uh, Kami's got the public, um, comments that were submitted, written. So kick it over to Kami for, yeah.
Uh, so good evening, Secretary. I will be reading the public comments that were submitted online. So, uh, the first one from Teresa Poitras, Poitras. Library Board of Trustee Members. I just read the Times Union article about Town Supervisor Jack Conway's threat to take the library land by eminent domain. Please do not give in to his bullying tactics. Not only does it seem this issue, not only does it seem this use of the vacant library land was a surprise to the board, it was also a surprise to me and many in the community. I also viewed the October meeting on YouTube and commend your board members for keeping your cool and conducting a civilized conversation, despite the repeated threats and comments that the board is at fault for not jumping on this opportunity. And if you don't agree, he will use his power to take the land for other town usage. Perhaps other locations were viewed and passed on. However, which other property owners were contacted and why is he not threatening them with eminent domain, just the library board of trustees? I am not fully apprised of the feasibility study or what other options are out there and am in support of a new police station, but do not agree the East Green Bush Library space with only a one-lane road is the right space. The quiet sanctity of the library and various, various events you hold would be broken by traffic and sirens of the police station. Children walking in would be faced with additional traffic and situations where accused criminals may be entering or exit, exiting the police building, which could increase anxiety. You should be presented with the physical documents of the review and given sufficient time to review the proposal, not two months, and then told, time's up and you have to agree or the town is taking the land. This is not a good faith offer. I'm a big supporter of the library and disagree with Mr. Conway's comment that the East Green Bush Library is too big and too expensive. I am a member of the Friends of the Library, have a brick in your patio, and was there as recently as last week at your semi-annual book sale. As one of the people of East Green Bush, I do not want to see you bullied into selling your land or having it taken for the new police station. I hope you are able to maintain your independence and courage in pushing back on this bullying action. If there's a way I can assist in your review of information or community outreach, please let me know. Best regards, Teresa Poitras. The next one is from Susan Marie. I vehemently oppose the new East Green Bush Police Station being built on the green lawn around the East Green Bush Library. I posted this today on What's Going On in and Around East Green Bush, New York on Facebook. Please look at the comments there, reasons why people oppose, and number of people who reacted. We know the meeting is tonight at 6:30. One reason that stuck out for me is the noise, sirens disrupting patrons who are used to the traditional respect of peace and quiet in the library. Sincerely, Susan Herman. Dawn McNally. Dear East Green Bush Library Board Members, I am writing to formally express my serious concerns regarding the recent discussions about relocating the East Green Bush Police Department to the undeveloped land in front of the East Green Bush Community Library. While I recognize the need for a new police facility, I believe placing it adjacent to our community's library is inappropriate and, and potentially harmful to both institutions. My primary concerns with this proposed location are as follows. Safety and atmosphere for children and families. The library serves as a safe, welcoming, and accessible space for people of all ages, especially children. Locating a police station directly next door could fundamentally change the library's atmosphere. The constant presence of police activity, including emergency responses, patrol cars, and interactions with individuals in custody, could create an intimidating or stressful environment that discouraged as families and children from using the library. Aesthetics and community space. The grassy area in front of the library and the adjacent YMCA currently offers a sense of openness and tranquility. Replacing this green space with a secure government facility will diminish the area's aesthetic appeal and alter the feeling of a shared community campus. Traffic and pedestrian safety. A new police station will inevitably increase vehicle traffic, especially large emergency response vehicles. This poses a safety risk to the high volume of foot traffic, including children and seniors who regularly visit the library and YMCA. Impact on the library's autonomy. The recent reports, such as those in the Times Union indicating that Town Supervisor Jack Conway is prepared to pursue eminent domain against the library district are particularly troubling. This aggressive approach could undermine the library's independence and create a contentious relationship between two vital community institutions. Alternative locations. East Green Bush has other potential sites for the police station as indicated by earlier discussions. I urge the town board to explore other less disruptive options, such as the grassy area near the Farm Gate Development, which was previously considered. I urge you to consider the long-term implications of this decision and to engage in a more collaborative process with the East Green Bush Community Library. Our town deserves a solution that benefits all its residents without compromising the safety and unique character of our beloved library. Thank you for your time and consideration of my perspective. Sincerely, Dawn McNally. And last, we, two more. Caitlin B. Good evening. I was alarmed a few days ago to discover the news that the town intends to claim library property through eminent domain. While I appreciate that the town police are in need of updated facilities, taking the library's green space is not the answer. This is a place intended for teens, children, families, all people who seek its peace and refuge, a gathering space for events, a place for those who may struggle with sensory issues. I appreciate the library giving us all the opportunity to speak our opinions and hope that we may continue to share our voices freely and keep our libraries safe community spaces. Thank you, Caitlin B. And lastly, Amy Bayer. Hello. I am writing in about the potential build of a new police station on the East Green Bush Library property. I think this is an awful idea. There are a lot of people that don't particularly care for the East Green Bush Police, for their lack of assistance in real matters and stay far away from them. So know their building will be on property, so to know that their building will be on property of the library may keep those library patrons away. Also, the police station brings drama to its building, and the library doesn't need that. Times have changed a lot since back when the police station and library shared a building. It's just not good for business. A lot of things go on within, within the library, and I think police would compromise that. Another point financially, taxpayers' dollars should not, shouldn't go to that when the building the police are cur, are currently in is just fine. It works. If anything, they should remodel or add on to their current location. Thank you.
Thanks, Kami, and a thank you to everyone who submitted a written comment. With nothing else for comments, we're gonna go, we'll do the vote to, uh, move into executive session. So motion to, um, to convey executive session to, for the public, for the purposes of discussing, uh, potential litigation. Mary makes the motion, second. Katie? All, any discussion, comments? All in favor? Uh, seven to zero, so motion carries. Uh, thank you.